Alan, we can go.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate. President Callahan, did you proceed with the calling our meeting to order?
So I would call to order the Batavia Park District Board of Commissioners joint board meeting with the Batavia City Council to order at 6:01. Does that please call the roll?
Sure. Riley?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
And Callahan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the call to order the special committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. First item on the agenda would be roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knapp?
Here.
Chantet? Sofa? Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi? Malay? Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 10 out of 14.
All right, thank you. First and only item on the agenda tonight is a discussion for the Batavia River Corridor Master Plan Update. Laura, do you want to introduce them?
Yes, Hitchcock Design Group and WPBK Engineering are here this evening following the discussion of the initial four concepts that were put forth at the last meeting. There was a request to revisit the concepts that were developed in the prior project back in 2000 and hear why those particular concepts either moved forward or did not and how they relate to the four that were presented last time. And so here this evening to present that additional information is Lacy Lawrence from Hitchcock Design Group. And I'll stop my share so that she can share any information she has.
Thank you, Laura. Hi, everyone. I'm Lacy Lawrence from Hitchcock Design Group. Also with me from Hitchcock Design Group is Bill Inman. And so he's got a kind of a brief introduction and then I'll run you through some more detailed information regarding the concepts. So I'll give it over to Bill first.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So this evening should be a fairly low pressure evening despite the importance of this topic. But our objectives for this evening are to do two things. Number one is to present to you five concepts, which would be four plus an additional one that we've come up with since our last time we were together, and get some feedback on that. And so looking forward to that part of the advancement. Secondly, we'd like to receive some guidance on which concepts you would like us to go and get some public input on. So we don't have to select a concept this evening. We can eliminate a concept in terms of what we would like to bring to the public, but that's the kind of guidance that we're looking at, looking for this evening. So at the conclusion of our last meeting, we were asked to do several things, and we're going to bring that forward this evening. The first was to show, like Laura was saying, to show the evolution of the planning concepts from the DNR's Alternative Dam Report, and then arrive at a collection of different options for consideration. And so we'll kind of storyboard that for you and let you know how it got from that report to where we're at today, which ones were considered and refined and move forward, and which ones were not selected for any additional consideration at that time. We were also asked to exclusively illustrate the macro interrelationship between the dam and the depot pond. And just to focus on that only and not show design examples for what improvements could be developed just yet. So we're going to focus on the river configuration as it relates to the dam and depot pond this evening, and any recreation improvements or public improvements will be a future conversation. We're also asked to be clear about the costs as best as we could at this preliminary time, and what portion that the DNR would likely support, and also what cost would be borne by Batavia for the balance of the work represented in any of these five concepts. So we've split up what we think is going to be the DNR's contribution and what Batavia's cost would be for any of these five concepts to provide some clarity there. Now, preliminary engineering will still have to be, will still be needed for any of these concepts to be advanced and to refine the costs and to advance the DNR buy-in to fund any particular dam removal scenario. But we have reviewed these concepts with the DNR, Concepts A, B, C, D, and E, which you will see here in a moment, and have confirmed that all of these approaches would be conceptually eligible for their dam removal funding program. So they have offered us that at this point in terms of what you're going to see tonight. So again, for this evening, what we're looking for is input on these concepts, and then some guidance on which concepts we should bring to the public in terms of our next step in our data gathering process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lacy to share her screen and to walk us through the concepts.
All right. All right. Everyone see my screen. What we are seeing here, this board, is kind of an illustration of kind of the process that we have gone through. And from the start, where we began with the inventory and analysis of the site, reviewed all of the relevant planning documents to develop the current concepts that we're presenting with you and gathering input from you today. So up at the top here is the Alternative Evaluation Report. So these examples, 1, 2, 3, 4, 4A, and 5, these represent all of the alternatives that were evaluated back in that report back in 2000. And so from that report, gather some additional information, as well as it has been, you know, over 20 years since that report was done, we evaluated some new concepts, and those are kind of what you're seeing like in this second row. So these are refined options for your consideration today. As you can see, you know, some of these from the initial evaluation report were evaluated to be advanced further and presented. And some have these big red Xs because during the report, they had some different indicator that kind of prohibited from, you know, whether it was cost, permitting, all of those kind of factors that kind of limited it from being advanced further for consideration. And so I'm going to go through each one of these. So you can see, we've kind of expanded on Alternative 1, we've expanded on Alternative 4A, and we've presented some additional concepts here that are, that were not originally evaluated. So I mean, kind of zoom in. So this one right here is Alternative 1. So in this alternative, this is one that you have seen at the last presentation. This was our Option B. And so in this concept, it created a berm between the north end of Riverwalk into Duck Island and created a series of rock weirs, kind of starting up here at six foot and kind of stair step down to where the current dam is that would be modified until we got down to elevation zero, which is essentially the current water elevation of Fox River. Obviously, in doing so, essentially created a new impoundment at the north end here, which maintained the current elevation of Depot Pond. And so this one, after further evaluation for various metrics, we decided that this was a viable option that still would be relevant today. And so we continued to advance this option for consideration. As we move next, so this was Alternative 2. So the main characteristic of this option was a bifurcated main channel of the Fox River. So essentially, this is similar to what was done at Yorkville. And so we have on one side, a new step dam, kind of in the area of the current dam. We have like a concrete separating wall, and then again, kind of a similar stair steps down, starting at like elevation six, all the way down to elevation zero. And so some of the outcomes of this one that kind of limited it from being advanced further was the fact that it required installation of a flood control berm that protected the retirement community in the event of, you know, a flood. Because what it does essentially is it lowers, you know, the flood elevation now would encompass most of this property in this concept. So with that, as well as at the time, it determined placing too much recreation action in front of the, in front of the community was not preferred, as well as it kind of had negative ramifications to the current infrastructure of some of the Riverwalk improvements. So this option was not advanced or presented to you at the last meeting. However, since then, you know, we have kind of made some changes to this to present like a new concept to you, but I'll get to that, you know, in a second. So that was Option, Alternative 2. Alternative 3 essentially removes the existing dam and puts in a new step dam. So essentially, a step dam kind of eliminates like the rolling effect, you know, that the current dam has. So if you go over it, it's considered a bit safer. And that there's, you know, that spinning churning water at the end kind of is reduced in this kind of dam style. So this concept, we get a new dam in the place of the current one. So it still maintains that impoundment upstream of the dam and maintains the current water elevation of Depot Pond. And this alternative to create a safer bypass channel, this was planned to go through the cut, you know, kind of through here is the current parking lot to the retirement community. Peg bond is over here. And so this concept, you know, wasn't considered for advancing for several reasons. Obviously, one, the implication, cost implications for construction and maintenance, and having to reroute roads and parking lots and current infrastructure made it not an advantageous concept. You know, it reduced safety or increased safety for boat passage over the dam, but obviously not as ideal as not having a dam altogether. It did provide some fish passage, having them go through the whitewater course or over the step dam. Obviously, during low tide or low flow conditions, it might be hard for fish to be able to find the entry here of this whitewater bypass to make it through. And, you know, if they can't go over the dam during low flow conditions. This one did have some positive outcomes as well. It did create a unique regional attraction, you know, with the whitewater course. But that does come with some negative implications of having to put in a pump in order to be able to add additional flow to make the course more challenging if you wanted to attract any type of, you know, regional events based around the whitewater course. Now, obviously, because the dam is still in place, it had very limited water quality improvements, but it did tick the box as far as maintaining the current elevation of Depot Pond. So that kind of in a nutshell was Option 3. And so that option wasn't considered for advancement for those reasons that I mentioned. Then we move kind of into Option 4. And this one is kind of a combination of several of the alternatives. So in this concept, it did create a land berm from the north end of the Riverwalk. Instead of kind of going like this directly over to the bank, it does encompass part of Duck Island before it heads over to the bank. And so in this concept, it does kind of hydraulically separate Depot Pond from the main channel. And it does then also kind of take, take some of those aspects of the Alternative 1, where it creates kind of a series of rock weirs or, you know, grade control structures to kind of drop in elevation. And this one, in order to kind of save on some of the costs, because the initial one was rather long, extended all the way to the north end of Duck Island, this is a minimal, you know, a reduced footprint for these rock weirs. But in doing so, it did reduce some of the water surface elevation going upstream, and it did require some modification to the current dam. So obviously, this option wasn't considered for advancement for various reasons. Again, it did kind of increase, you know, safety concerns for boat passage. It does have some benefit for fish passage as well as habitat improvement with some of the rocks and riffles. It does have some improved water quality because the water impoundment is reduced a bit upstream. It does create a bit of a recreation amenity, not as much as the whitewater course does, but it's still, you know, of interest. And because Depot Pond is isolated from the main channel, it does maintain the elevation, it does reduce the sediment load to Depot Pond. But a negative outcome is obviously this would require some routine pumping in order to maintain the current water elevations. So that was Option 4. And it's very costly because it does include the berm and the rock weirs. So it's kind of several concepts in one. So it's ideally a very, very costly option. So for those reasons, we didn't advance Option 4. And then we move into 4A. So this is one that you did see at the last presentation. This one was actually renamed Option A from last time, if you remember. So in this option, we remove the dam entirely. And so therefore, the impoundment upstream, the water surface elevation does drop six feet. And then in order to maintain the current elevation in Depot Pond, it requires the construction of an earthen berm from the north end of the Riverwalk to the bank. And so again, similar to kind of Option 4, this does require some routine, routine pumping in order to maintain the elevations of Depot Pond. And I'll kind of go into that when we get to our final concepts for consideration. But that's kind of that one in a summary. And then the last alternative that we've presented in the report is Alternative 5. And so this option can put in a new step dam where the current dam is now. And then it essentially creates a whitewater course through the core of downtown. So down at the south end here, Depot Pond, it goes through buildings, streets, until outlets kind of down here by means. And so obviously, this option was not considered for advancement. For one, it was very costly, challenging to implement as far as permitting, as well as impacts to current infrastructure, roads, buildings, and requires significant acquisition of land. And so this option was not considered for advancement. Zoom out here. Again, we kind of summary. And so here's Alternative 1, 2, 3, 4, 4A, and 5. So again, we considered advancing 1 and 4A from those options. And so this brings us to where we are now. So our options for-
Can I hear you? About two bucks.
So our options for consideration currently are Option A, B, C, D, and E. So in our last meeting, we presented on A through D. And so E would kind of be the new concept that you haven't seen yet. Essentially, a version of Alternative 2. Let me zoom in here again. So again, as we presented, this is Option B, very similar, essentially, the deck of the same as Alternative 1 that was in the report. And then Alternative E is the new one. So this is a variation of Alternative 2. Essentially, what it takes is the concept of the new step dam and the bypass channel, but it switches them. So now, instead of having the step dam along the east bank, the step dam is on the west bank, and our bypass channel is now on the east bank. And we also have kind of reduced the footprint to a kind of a minimal length in order to achieve the drop that we need with a certain elevation to maintain, you know, more recreation-based bypass rather than a more challenging, you know, moderate to high flow in the channel. And so what this does is it, since the dam is on this side, it maintains the current water drop in the flood elevations that are there now, so therefore kind of alleviates the need for the flood wall along this bank here. And because we currently have walls on the east bank, the elevation change with the water and flooding in this area would be less of a concern, but will have to be continually, will have to be modeled, obviously, if we advance this concept further to ensure what those flood elevations will be and how it impacts current infrastructure. So going forward, this is obviously considered a little bit less costly than Option B was because of the limited footprint, the length of the channel improvements are less, so therefore the cost is a little bit less. It so creates a recreation amenity through the bypass. It is beneficial for fish and for boat passage, since we have the bypass channel being in the main channel. Again, a lower water quality benefit because we're still, we still are maintaining the impoundment with upstream of the dam. It maintains the current surface water elevation of Depot Pond without requiring the need of routine pumping. And then we can also possibly provide additional options for portage. And then move on to Option C. This is one we presented last time, so I won't go into too much depth on C and D. But essentially, C was the concept where we removed the dam entirely. So it reduced the, the water surface elevation upstream of the dam. And in order to maintain some amount of open water within Depot Pond that didn't require pumping, so it'd be hydrologically connected to the main channel, was by excavating the north end of Depot Pond. So it drops the surface water elevation down six feet. By excavating, it maintains the current depth that the pond is now, would just be, the water surface elevation would just be lower by six feet. And then at the south end, converting some of this to park open space to be determined on what that, that would look like in the future. And then Option D was essentially very similar, where we removed the dam entirely. But in Option D, we restored kind of this north area with native restoration, seeding, plants, and then converted the south end to like parks and open space. And then Option A, which is a variation of Alternative 4A, again, created the land berm separating Depot Pond from the main channel. And so kind of with that, we did evaluate each option for costs, because that, you know, it always plays a significant role in decision-making. We do have kind of the matrix here off to the side. Zoom into that real quick. Where we evaluated each of the options for consideration based on some of these design criteria as well as cost effectiveness. So most, all the options, again, YIDNR will support kind of each of these concepts because it does provide a safer passage for boats in all the concepts. All the concepts do provide some amount of fish, fish passage. Some have additional kind of recreation amenities, you know, whether we do the whitewater bypass or the whitewater course. All of them still allow for flood conveyance. Some, obviously, in the concepts where we remove the dam entirely, obviously, we have improved kind of water quality because the upstream impoundment is no longer there. We have more of a free-flowing river condition. And then most of the concepts maintain some amount of Depot Pond. Most, some of these have obviously varying amounts of maintenance, long-term maintenance involved. We kind of check the boxes for the ones that might require more maintenance, whether it be for pumping or installing kind of a new dam that'll have to be maintained, and as well as cost effectiveness. So this is the one where we broke down the estimate for each of these concepts by what the IDNR would be willing to fund, essentially the removal of the current dam, and then what kind of costs would fall into Batavia's responsibility for those improvements. And so as you can see, the least expensive option is going to be Option D, where essentially we just remove the dam and only kind of restore the banks with, you know, native plantings, native seeding, restore Depot Pond in a similar fashion. So that's obviously the least expensive option. And kind of summarizes, I guess, IDNR essentially is only going to pay for the dam removal and all of these options. So that's why the cost kind of is essentially the same for all of the varying options here. The second least expensive would be this option here, Option A, where we create kind of a land berm here to separate dam and Depot Pond. Obviously, this cost does not include what the long-term maintenance would be for the annual pumping for the year. And the next least expensive one would be Option C, where we excavate out Depot Pond to maintain like the northern portion of Depot Pond. And then Option B and E are very similar in costs. Obviously, as we can discuss when we ran through the options, how Option E is a little bit more cost-effective, just due to the limited run on the whitewater course rather than extending it the full width of the channel and, you know, over 900 feet in length. So with that, I mean, kind of open it up to any questions that we have on this, on the current presentation, and then we kind of move into discussions.
Lacy, if I could maybe point one, one last thing out. For the concepts that require any fill within the river, such as Concept A, where we're creating a land bridge between the peninsula and the land of the west, anything where we're putting fill in the river will require some form of mitigation of that fill somewhere else along the river. So those solutions would be further evaluated if any of those options were considered.
Steve, I have a question in regards to that. And that is, do we get any credit for the, when the dam is removed for that compensatory storage? Or would it, would the earthen berm be completely 100% that we would have to provide that? Because we are removing product from the river.
That's a good question, Eric. I'm not sure of that answer. I don't know if John, if John, if you, if you know what that answer is at this point, or if that's something we'd have to look into.
Yeah, it's something we'd look into a little further, but it depends on the timing. You know, if, if the dam is removed and the river level lowers, obviously, some areas would not be floodplain then after the dam is removed. So depending on timing, if the dam is removed and you come back later and do those improvements, I think it would result in a permitting obstacle. But it would require doing those at another, a later date, say maybe a year or two later. So.
I have a, I have an add-on question to that, really, basically the same thing. But if we were going to build a park, open space like in C and D, when you do that dredging, is that, is that dirt just unusable to create a park? Maybe this is a question for Eric. I mean, can you use that at all? Or is it just too waterlogged and damaged in the short term, term to really do anything? So which kind of throwaway?
I can answer that question. You know, it depends on what the soil is and if there's also any sort of, if there's any sort of contaminants, you would have to haul that material off. And then if it is just not a stable material, it would also have to be hauled off. So that's, that's one of the big questions as far as cost goes with that option, because we don't know what the soil condition is. If we can reuse it, it reduces the cost significantly.
I left you instructions.
If not, it, it drives the cost up.
So basically, C and D, we don't really-
So whatever amount of meat you're going to use, put that sauce-
We don't, we don't really have a good cost estimate for C and D because we don't know what that dirt's going to be like. And actually, I would like to ask Eric, something that comes out of the water like that, I mean, even if it doesn't have contaminants, can you really make a good park out of it? Or is it really something that you would still put some fill over the top of it to get some sort of good compact soil to make a park?
You, you would have to build into the specs on the removal, besides the testing, to amend the soil with an active organic material.
Yeah. So, I mean, do we, I mean, we really don't have cost estimates then for C and D because of what John said and what Eric said, we have no idea what this dirt's going to be like. And we still have to put a ton of dirt over the top of it to make it a useful park. So you really can't just make a park by just transferring dirt and/or just filling in with dirt, right?
Well, you can make a park by filling in with dirt, but-
Yeah, but now we got to truck in, you know, how much, I mean, that's a ton of dirt. I mean, I'm not saying a ton. It's a lot of dirt, right? I mean-
Correct.
You know, and we have no idea how much dirt that's going to be and what the cost is going to be. So we really have no cost estimates for C and D, is what I'm saying.
They, they can vary. Yeah, that, that is variable depending on the soil conditions of those of Depot Pond.
Okay.
I have a question for John, kind of along those same lines. That channel that the Depot Pond was created from is not the natural channel of the Fox River. So when that goes to be either bermed off or whatever we decide to do with it, because that's not the original or natural channel of the Fox River, how does that affect, you know, your compensatory storage ability there if that's not truly the original channel of the river? Because where the dam is, is where the original channel of the Fox River was. Right? I don't know who wants to try to answer that.
Could you repeat that? I kind of missed it.
The channel, if, say we were going to berm off the Depot Pond and turn that into basically a true pond separate from the river, that was a man-made channel. That was not part of the original natural river. So would the DNR or Army Corps of Engineers take that into consideration as far as what we could do or how we could fill that in? as far as what we could do or how we could fill that in?
I believe their interpretation would be looking at the river the way it is right now. And then, you know, if we're filling that in as to the, you know, the conditions that are there now, that would be a fill and that would have to be compensated for.
Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, or question and or comment. I think one of the things that hasn't really been mentioned, we keep on talking about the water level dropping with A, C, and D in the river to the north. What we keep on failing to mention is that the river's going to shrink dramatically. It's 600 feet across right now, and it's going to shrink to 300 to 400 feet across. So the vista of what you see right now will be completely different. And I understand native plantings and everything. That's going to take a very long time to restore that much land to native plantings today. I'm not a landscape architect or anything, but the, I question the cost. It would seem to be, I mean, probably a decades-long project at least. And you're always going to have to be in, or in Fabian South right now, taking out all the invasive species. We have volunteers doing that. But at what point does that become cost prohibitive in the future to maintain that? And if you look at the IDNR stuff, that goes all the way back to Geneva, the Fabian Forest Preserve up there, because it's going to affect that land too. I think the new channel they created disappears.
Just, just north of the island that is in the river right now with the bridges connected to it in Fabian is where the effect of our dam ends.
Yeah, so I think that new cut that they just did, that turns the mud, is what I saw. Other things. So this is, that's hugely impactful, and that's why I've said it before, keeping that with options B or E, it kind of keeps everything the same. And relatively speaking, from a, you don't have to have that continued maintenance of those things forever, basically.
But realize that low water will still be what it was at low water now, or very close to it.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Realize then, with the dam still controlling the water level of the pond, the pond level will change. And at low water, it will be similar to what it was earlier this year.
But don't forget, when you, we, it's low right now because there's nothing holding it back because there's a breach. So the breach never allows the water to come up to the top of the dam. The water's always flowing, so it's always going to keep to that level of the top of the dam, which it's not right now. And it's shrunk again. We got a lot of rain, but I just drove over it today and I'm like, wow, it's shallow again because it's not getting to the top of the dam because it can't. So B and E allow it to come back up to the level that we're historically used to. And I know people can say, well, historically, it was never there. But, you know, speaking for the homeowners along there, I'm pretty sure they didn't expect that a water feature filled by the river would disappear at any point when they were buying their property. It's one thing to buy property facing a farm that you shouldn't expect, the farm is always going to be there. But when you buy waterfront property on a river, you kind of expect it's going to be there.
I knew 18 years ago that the state wanted the dam out of there. And they're working actively to get all the dams off the Fox River. I think the only thing that they effectively want to leave on the dam is Stratton up north and Dayton at the south end, and that's it.
Understood. We have options to keep it looking without, look, they all cost a lot of money. There's no doubt they all cost a lot of money. And B and E may have a higher upfront cost, but I would imagine that B and E are going to have the lower long-term cost. Go ahead.
This is Alderman Lehman for those online. I have a couple of questions about regarding the pump. And this may have been brought up in some other meetings. But do we know the yearly cost of the maintenance if we went with a pumping system?
I can answer that. It's, it's really hard to determine, you know, depending on the soil conditions and how much the water seeps out of the pond, how much water comes in from the surrounding area, running directly off into the pond to maintain a water level, and really just the rate, the conditions throughout the year as far as if we're in a drought or if it's a wet year. So it's really hard to determine exactly what that cost will be. And so, you know...
So we don't even have a ballpark?
I would, you know, I hate to throw a number out there. It could be, it could be 50 to 100,000. I'm just, like, really just ballparking it. It just depends on the year and how much water just, you know, seeps into the soil and out through the system on a daily basis.
And are there other local municipalities that have effectively used pumps like in concept A?
There, I mean, there is, there's ponds that are fed by pumps and to maintain its water surface elevation. I don't have any examples, but there are throughout Illinois.
And then one additional question. Do any of these concepts have additional parking, public parking being added?
Those kind of features are something that we will be evaluating kind of in the second stage of the master planning process. The activity we're trying to focus on this first half is more the relationship between the dam and Depot Pond and its implications upstream and downstream. And so once we kind of have a preferred concept or approach for that, we can then go in and layer over the top of that for recreation amenities, paths, trails, parking. So that will come kind of more in the future, you know, a couple more months from now, essentially. And we'll have those kind of for your consideration.
Anybody else in the council have any questions? Anybody online have questions from the Park District?
This is Kevin with the, with the Park District. Speaking of upstream, will the effect or plans of Geneva or St. Charles to build a recreation, a water recreation, taking out their dams, affect the water level of any of these, you know, coming downstream? Restrict the water? Is the water volume going to be the same regardless of what recreation St. Charles or Geneva puts in around their dams in the future?
I believe the water level will be, you know, the water volume will be the same. It won't restrict. I mean, any improvements upstream would not overly restrict the flow coming downstream. It would more just be a free flow more than anything and just maintain the existing conditions that there are there now.
Anybody from the City Council?
I think Alderman's around, wanted to speak.
Nick, did you...
Yeah, I just had, yeah, I had a question. I don't know if there's any revenue produced or anticipated by some of these options have a, you know, the bypass courses. Is there any type of economic revenue that we can count on that, or is it too nominal to even include in a, in a cost benefit analysis in drawing people to these courses or, or items on the river?
As presented now, the one that would probably produce the most regional draw specifically for whitewater would be like option three, essentially where you're creating an off-channel course where that you can then divert additional water to, you know, speed up the flow, to create more challenging situations through the bypass. So this one, as far as whitewater goes, this one would be like the most advantageous for that. The rest of it, the rest of these options have been more focused on is just, you know, creating a safer passage for non-motorized watercraft as well as fish passage, more of a way to bypass the dam than it is to really create a regional, like a recreation attraction.
These, I ask because, you know, for us, cost is a huge determinant through these options. And if there's a way to allay some of the costs with increased revenue, some of those things are appealing to people, to me. But I don't know if it's worth it or not, so that's why I ask. I guess that's a discussion for us separately. Or that'd probably be a Park District revenue source, perhaps. But if we're drawing people to downtown, it could be additional revenue too that's hard to quantify.
I have another question, just off the wall, a question about these pumps that would help feed the pond and some of these options. How are these things located? Are they above the water or below the water? Is there any natural resource that can power the pump, like the river, that can actually power the pump? Or is it something that it's a constant draw on the city and resources to power these pumps? Is there noise? Are they dangerous to fish? I just, I need, I need to know more about how these pumps work before I can even... I mean, right now, they're a non-starter for me just because I don't know anything about how these things work.
We haven't really done any in-depth analysis on the pumps, although, you know, they wouldn't be, my, my experience, they wouldn't be continuous because water would still be feeding into Depot Pond at certain times of the year. You wouldn't need that. I believe the pumps would provide some benefit with regards to aeration, water quality, and any algae that may be produced in the river. You know, those would have to be fed from water from the river, and that would have to be some sort of structure that captures the water to be able to pump it up into Depot Pond. Like I said, we don't have any specifications or costs on that right now in this conceptual stage. But it would pump from the river to Depot Pond intermittently throughout the year. And it would have to be, these pumps are usually large-volume pumps. They, you would need a large power source. It wouldn't be hooking up any sort of solar system to a pump. It would require direct electricity to power.
I wasn't talking solar, I was talking hydro, but... So again, and for reference, the reason I asked that question it was actually kind of, is that those are two other options or other options that we really don't have an idea on the costs. So, you know, if we took options that we have to move dirt and try to make a park and don't know how, don't have any idea of the quality of the soil or whatever, we have options where we have pumps that we really have no idea about the cost, how they would operate, whether or not it can be supplemented with some sort of natural resource. Those are all options to me, and this is just my opinion, that we really have no idea what those costs are. So outside of some of the things like actually like B, where we're throwing some rocks and concrete in, and E, again, where we're throwing some rocks and concrete in where we can try to get some firm cost, we have really no idea what these other things cost, in my opinion.
I just want to clarify one thing too with, with option B and E. Essentially, these are putting in new dams. So essentially, they'll have to be monitored and maintained as a new, like, class three dam. So they will also require some...
Understood, understood. But that's no different than what we have today, really. I mean, so, but what I'm saying is there's so many unknowns in these other options. And maybe, Pat, you have a better idea of the construction of some of these things than I do. But all I'm saying is what I see is a bunch of, I see a gross number, but then I see a bunch of things that we have no idea what their ongoing costs and/or just their initial cost to install and operate would be. And that's really concerning to me because I can't really make an evaluation because I don't know what they would actually cost. We get into it and it costs $4 million more than what we said. We're in a lot of trouble.
Well, we do know that the initial cost of a pumping system would be around 300 to 400,000 dollars. As far as the maintenance and pumping costs throughout the year, we don't have a really good handle on that right now.
So, John, I'll respond to your, your comments, and then I have a couple of my own. I want to, I want to share some thoughts. We did quite a bit of investigation back when the berm option seemed to be floating to the top as, as the likely determinant to maintain the level of Depot Pond and the pumping. And there was some projections that the long-term maintenance was going to be significant. And I don't know the exact numbers, but, but there, it didn't, it wasn't as simple as just putting a pump in and letting the pump run. There was a lot of annual maintenance to the pumps to make sure they're running properly, make sure it flows, the additional cost of energy to operate the pumps, et cetera. So I, I think to your point, having something that has a less reliance on not only energy consumption for sustainability perspective, but also from a long-term operations perspective with respect to the governmental agencies that would be responsible for whatever solution is ultimately decided upon. So I think we do need to have or try to get to quantify. And maybe Eric, I think in Jim Eevee's files, we had some information early on when we were doing those evaluations back in 2000, 2001. There may be some information in the file at the Park District on that that might be useful to the design team.
Absolutely, we can obtain that.
Okay. So just a couple of comments. I've obviously, like many of you, probably have gotten emails from a number of citizens as we've kind of gone through this process. And, you know, the ones I've received have overwhelmingly been to try to maintain some level of dam, if you will, in the river. So I, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to kind of go back a little bit to say, you know, these are, these are all good options, right? They all obtain some objective. But I think as a group, both at the City of the Park District, what are our objectives, right? I mean, are, you know, obviously, the health of the river, removing over 100-year-old dam that's, that's broken, that needs to be repaired, you know, that needs, needs some attention. You know, what are we trying to obtain in, in the final analysis, right? I mean, I think some of these things are interesting with creating more parks and infilling that I think have some unintended consequences. You know, the, the amount of insects that will be in downtown Batavia would grow exponentially for people to enjoy outdoor activities in, in the summertime in downtown Batavia if we have some of these restored areas, in my opinion. I think if it's the health of the river, you know, we know why IDNR wants to get out of the dam business. It's that, I mean, yes, it's the health of the river, nobody, nobody contests that, right? We want to make sure that the river's healthy and that the fish life and wildlife in the river can be healthy. I also, I guess, feel pretty strongly that in improving or enhancing the recreational opportunities is a primary objective, at least at the Park District. And I think generally for tourism, if you will, in Batavia, which would be wise on all of our parts to bolster activities in the community. I want to be careful, and I guess I'm going to challenge the design team. I think some of your costs are a little aggressive, particularly on B and E in comparison to the others. I, I think we need to make sure that we're not, you know, just kind of saying, well, we want to be, we want to be conservative because that looks like a big project. And I'm not arguing that you haven't really had a lot of detailed analysis and you're using some historical numbers and some, some good engineering judgment to come up with these numbers. But I think before we, we share this with the public, I think the numbers need to be, need to be more realistic by their comparisons to each other so that objective evaluations can be made of each option. I, I really appreciate the additional work on option E. I know at the Park District in 2000, you know, having the riffles or the wiers and, and using the river in a more recreational mode was something that was critically important to the Park District and much of the constituents that, that addressed us at that time. I realize there's, there's both sides of this argument about a complete removal of the dam and, and the one that obviously, you know, presents itself in, in the form of C, D, or A with respect to trying to kind of compensate for the dam removal. I will just leave you with one final thought. The Park District was saddled with some unintended consequences for the removal of the South Dam and spent nearly $2.5 million rehabilitating the quarry as a result of the waterfall. We were told by the engineers that the, that... We were told by the engineers that the, that the, that the water fall, based on all of the science and all the calculations, was not going to be as severe as it actually ended up being. So I, I guess my fear is if we, if we're too aggressive in evaluating C, D, and E simply because they're cheaper, I think that there's, there may be some unintended consequences that, that, that we may be facing as a community that we're going to be challenged with. At least we know that B and E can be effectively leveraged, much like the original dam, without the, without the breach, and, and have a historical understanding as to the, how the river will react to that. So I, I guess I'm to some degree tipping my hand because I think there's a, there's a value in B and E beyond the costs. And I'm certainly one to be very sensitive to our tax dollars here in our community. But let's face it, the dam is over 100 years old and we haven't spent a penny on it in 100 years. When you look at this over time, I think we need to look at these numbers over time and not just as a, as a, as a first cost analysis. So I'll leave you with those thoughts.
John, I might pass it over to you as in regards to some of those questions, but I know, like, obviously, this is modeled similar after Yorkville. And obviously, the stretch of the river in that section of the River Mile is significantly larger, wider than we're currently working with here in downtown Batavia. So obviously, the costs aren't going to be exactly the same, and we're trying to make a, a limited amount of whitewater course to kind of keep the cost implications reduced compared to the overall length that was done by Yorkville. And at that point in time, obviously, IDNR funded a little bit more for that improvement than they are doing at this time, so they're, they're kind of establishing a new criteria for their, for their grant, for their dam removals. So we'll probably get a little bit less than what they received for their modifications, as well as I think they had some more appropriations that allowed them to fund some of these additional enhancements above and beyond, you know, what IDNR funded for those improvements. But as far as the overall cost, I'm not aware of what that is, so I might ask see if John from WBK might be able to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting with IDNR last week, and we discussed the, the costs on that. They, they provided us with the, the cost of what the Yorkville Dam was. We haven't received those numbers yet, we're hoping to get those before we can have a better idea of the cost and comparison.
Lacy, I think we're getting some feedback from your audio, if you could mute and see if that works.
Sure.
Yes, okay, there. John, could you repeat your answer?
Sure, yes. We had a meeting with IDNR last week. They discussed the, the Yorkville Dam. They do, they were gonna provide some numbers to us for cost for that, that dam modification. We have not received those, those numbers yet, so once we do, we will have a better idea of comparison and cost for, for alternative E.
Yeah, let me throw a few history notes into this whole conversation. 60 years ago, in 1961, Art Swanson, who later owned the hardware store down here, was elected mayor of Batavia. And Mr. Swanson had the vision that he needed to take more of the centralized area of the downtown and add some more commercial activity to it. And one of the things that needed to be done was they needed to fill in what they called the second channel of the Fox River. So I was told a story by Mr. Swanson and by Francis Yowsey, who was then the city attorney of Batavia, that in 1961, they got in a car and drove down to Springfield to the Illinois Division of Waterways, I guess that's what it was called at the time, to have a discussion about what they needed to do to go about filling in the second channel of the Fox River. Now, the second channel of the Fox River in those days is depicted on the back wall there in that Saturday Evening Post cover that everybody's quite familiar with, that was done in 1958. What most people don't realize is they look at it today or put one up in their house, when John Falter painted that picture, that was not the pond that we have today. That pond that's painted there was a pond that ran all the way down to Wilson Street. And there was just a str- a stream of water that went underneath a second bridge that was be in front of today's Walgreens, and then there was another huge body of water that went down to First Street, and then that went underneath First Street and went into what was then the bowling alley in the Shumway Foundry property. Then it went over a, a bridge that we had down there for railroad cars to go over to get into the body company. And so there was all, this thing is much different than it was 60 years ago. But what came back from Francis Yowsey and Art Swanson's visit to the Illinois Division of Waterways in those days was, is that they got down there and they said to the division, what would your opinion be if we filled in the second channel of the Fox River? And I, Francis told me he was kind of amused by the response they got was, what second channel of the Fox River? And he says, well, there's a second channel that's been dug in the Fox River that goes all the way, there's two channels of the Fox River that goes through Batavia. Well, the state didn't have a lot of records of that. In fact, they said, well, it must have been that when they were building the windmill factories and moving out the limestone and building the Newton wagons, there was a lot of people that just did things. And one of the things they did was they needed water power because in, you know, 150 years ago, you didn't have electricity, so you needed the water to power, you know, the activities in the windmill factories and whatever have you. So we don't have, you know, trust me, I've had, over the years, we've had a lot of people in here wanting to go into the city records and find all the records of all this activity. And poor Public Works folks, we're constantly kind of discovering new things that have happened that nobody ever wrote down or told us anything about or anything else. This was all just kind of created. So just as a couple of points of information, we've had some interesting situations here in the last couple of years. We had a gentleman commit suicide one night, and he came down in his car, and he drove into the Fox River up at the boat club, and then with our, our city, one of our city snowplows was going by, it was a snowy night, and he saw a flash in the car, and the gentleman shot himself in the head, and the car floated down to near the Challenge Dam, and then it submerged itself and went down in the water. So the Batavia Fire Department, it was dark out, we needed to, you know, respond to this, so our chief got up there and he called for the Aurora Fire Department to come up with their dive team. Now, I was standing there when this happened, and Aurora gets up there and Aurora puts their suits on, and they jump into the Fox River right there above, just north of where the Challenge Building is. Now, I'm on the east bank of the river, this is all happening. Aurora jumps in the water, and within a couple of minutes, the Aurora guys come back out of the water, and they say, our chief then, chief, we've never seen the Fox River like this before, how deep is this? And the chief says, well, he wasn't sure how deep it was, and they said, you know, we think you got at least 30, 40 feet of depth in the Fox River right here at this particular part of the Fox River. And he said, this is, we went down there and that gentleman's in that car, we can see him, he's dead. We're gonna recommend that you stop this operation now, and we'll come back tomorrow in the daylight, and we'll try to do this because this is highly dangerous, and the depth of this water is very problematic for us. So the decision was made, we let the gentleman stay down there all night, and then the next day, they came back with big tow trucks, and Aurora went back down and hooked up the car and got it out of there. So we found out that one of the deepest parts of the entire Fox River is right there at the north end of the old Challenge Buildings. Now, we're told that was done, I guess, because we were trying then to force the water of the river as it came south to go toward the deeper part of the river, which then would put it underneath the Challenge Windmill Factory Buildings, and they could then use the water power to run the factory. And the Challenge had, the, the building that's still standing up there at the north end still has the river bed underneath it that's probably not being used, there may be some trickles of water in there, but there's not much. And then beyond that, they had a second building that sat out on top of the Fox River, and when it was about 1983, 84, somebody went down there and dropped a match in that, and the thing burned up and all the, fell into the river and went away. We still got the, the pylons sitting down there in the river just south of the dam that you see. People ask, where do these pylons come from? Well, those pylons are where this building sat that they ran all the water power for the Challenge. So then we get down here, south of the bridge, right next to where Walgreens is, and this is where there was another big body of water, and the U.S. Wind Engine and Pump Company came in, and when they built themselves about 1860, they built right on top of the river, and they had these buildings with all these wheels in there, and they were doing all this other kind of good stuff. And then the, the Van Nortricks came in and built this building, this was the last of the windmill factories to be built, the room we're in right now. And they, they started, believe it or not, they built this, we have pictures of this building as a one-story building. And then somebody came along and told Mr. Van Nortrick, well, it's kind of a tricky thing here, what are you gonna do if that river rises some night and you're gonna flood your place out? So Van Nortrick then supposedly got the idea, he'd build two more floors onto this building so if it flooded, he could throw everything on the elevator and go up in the air. And so if you look at the topography of the ceilings here, you can see that this, there's a lot of support built into this building, and that's built to hold the upper two floors of this building that weren't originally there when it was built. Then Van Nortrick came up with the idea of building the cut, which is still out here today that goes over the river rain, and, you know, when we did the river walk, we kind of recreated that, but that was, again, another way to capture this water. So then, as things went on in the 1960s, there was no need to have the water here, so eventually, the city filled in everything in the second channel from Houston Street all the way down to where the water treatment plant is. That, that was much different than it is today because that was all done by Phil. So I guess what my point here is, is that we're dealing with a, a, a big legacy of history here, much of which we really don't know the, the, all the, the truth about it because nobody bothered to write anything down or keep any records or get any permission or do anything in the 1860s and 70s, we just went ahead and built this. Now, to the credit of Batavia and to some of my predecessors and whatever, they came back, and I'll give Peg Bond and Phil Elstrom and Art Swanson and Bob Brown and some, Jim Hansen, some of them who were really involved in acquiring this particular piece of property, and also building the idea that we would take the Depot Pond and make it into a recreational area. And I tell you what, you don't need to go very far, and any morning, you come down here, and we literally, I don't know, I've never counted them, but we have hundreds or dozens of people walking this pond every day, they're walking in behind many of the folks in the audience's homes up there on North Water Street. You know, when we got to the idea that we had the old C&amp;F Ford sitting down there in about the 300 block of North Water Street today, that was one of the most unsightly eyesores we've ever had in Batavia. And fortunately, a couple of young developers came along with the idea that if we would do this thing called a TIF district, it was a new idea at that time, and the city would buy the, would remove all the contamination up there, we'd pay for that, and we'd also pay for the sewer and the water, they would, and, and the streets, they would come in there and build townhouses, and they would have this nice view of the river. Well, they did, and it all worked, and we've got a beautiful area, and we've gone from what was one of the biggest eyesores in town to one of the most beautiful neighborhoods we have. Then we have John Pitts and Rick Ekblad came along and built the Quarry Stone Pond, and that's, that was another TIF district. I was at a meeting yesterday with the new Speaker of the House of the, of Illinois, and he was talking about, you know, people make fun of the TIF districts, but there, in Illinois, there's some really good stories of how that money really has been used to really do some enhancements, and I think Batavia's one of them. So I guess my opinion on this whole thing is, number one, I think that whatever we do here, we need to retain the Depot Pond in some form or fashion, that the Depot Pond is here to stay, it's a part of our history, it's a community feature, we have hundreds of people, thousands of people every month probably look at it and admire it. I've got some people wanting to come down from Stouton, Wisconsin to view Batavia because they hear so many nice things about it. So, I mean, I get that all the time, of people wanting to come in and see the stuff we're doing here, and, you know, I think that's very good. The, the dam that's up there, I'm afraid of it, it, it's a danger. And we've just recently had an incident where, most of you are aware, we had a couple from Geneva get caught up in a boat that they didn't know how to operate, and they came down and got themselves stuck on the top of the Depot, on the top of the, at the dam when it was at real high water. And I think I saw angels up here because I was standing there when the woman on that boat got off the boat and suddenly got sucked underneath the boat by the water, and her life preserver went off of her, and the next thing we know, we saw, all of a sudden, her hut, her head pops up south of the dam, and she's waving at the place and fire, and they went out in the river and got her, and she's okay. I don't know how she ever made it through that dam with all that cut stone and everything else that's laying there. It's funny, she didn't knock her head off. I mean, it, that's a, that thing is a dangerous thing. We've had other, over the years, we, we have had some other incidents up there, we've got a couple for the file, I would tell you, they're just, we don't know how these people died. They died in the middle of the night, but they died up around the, the dam, and we don't know if they fell off, they got sucked in, or whatever happened. So, so that does not have a, a real proud history. I mean, dams on the Fox River have a real black mark on them. There's a horrible story out of Elgin where two Elgin firemen got killed by being sucked in by the water going over the dam as they were attempting to rescue a boater. There's, there's real bad things about the dams, so I'm not a big fan of keeping that dam there. The other thing we've got is, I don't think there's one dam, I think there may be two. There's the dam you're seeing there that's all cracked up and busted up, and then behind it, there's a concrete dam that was put in prior to the, the dam that's there now. The new one broke, the old one, I think, is still in, in the water in some form or fashion in there. So goodness knows what's up there in that stuff, but, you know, I applaud everybody's efforts here, but this is something that I think we need to move cautiously on, and I, I'm strongly supportive of maintaining the Depot Pond area because that really has become a legacy of, of appearance for downtown Batavia, that is something that makes the town a very special place, and goodness knows, we get a lot of tax dollars off of it from the folks that live around it and enjoy it. And, you know, we've got other people looking at other parts of Batavia now to build things along the river because they think our river is a great thing, and they can sell apartments or condos to it. So this isn't anything that's gonna go away, it's gonna get bigger and better as time goes on, so, thank you.
Alderman Beck at one point had a hand up. Alderman Beck had her hand up before, but she doesn't now. Did you still want to speak?
Abby, did you have something you wanted to add?
I know we're running short on time, do you want to keep going? I can hold it.
You can keep going, we're gonna try and wrap this up here in the next five minutes, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm going back to an earlier conversation. Can we, could Hitchcock, Lacy, could you describe kind of the difference in water quality from kind of the, from the letting the river flow to building, rebuilding the impoundment? Kind of both the positive and negative implications of those?
Sure, actually, I'll let John from WBK, you probably will be a little bit more eloquent with his explanation.
Yes, you know, the dam, the dam creates a situation where there's less velocity, less flow upstream of the dam. When you remove the dam, it creates more turbulent flow, more velocity. When there's stagnant water behind the dam, there's less oxygen in the water, and therefore less conducive to more habitat for fish. As you remove a dam, you increase the velocity of the dam, you remove the stagnant water and create flowing water where there was stagnant water behind the dam, it now becomes flowing water and creates better habitat for fish and better habitat for, you know, all the critters that, that live in the river there, so it's kind of a reason. A dam creates kind of anoxic stagnant water, whereas dam removal creates more free flow water and better conditions for fish. Hope for that.
I think we lost you, John. John, you're muted.
Lacy, can you, can you mute your? Lacey, can you, uh, can you mute your...
I don't know what that is.
Okay. Uh, yeah, just to reiterate, um, when there's a dam, it creates, um, stagnant water upstream, uh, where sediment settle out, um, create, um, anoxic conditions in the summer, where there's less oxygen for the fish. Uh, when you remove a dam, um, there's more of free-flowing water, there's, it removes that stagnant, um, non-free-flowing water behind the dam and creates better habitat for fish, because there is, there's more oxygen, um, there's just more flowing water. So, that's, that's the primary reason, um, dam removal, uh, increases habitat and is, is better for water quality, because it does take away that, uh, anoxic condition, that's one of the main, um, problems with dams, is the, the condition of low oxygen behind the, behind the dam, and also, it collects the sediment where sediment could be, um, harboring, you know, heavy, heavy metals, contaminated sediment, that's the other environmental factor mostly rated, related to dams.
And so, will options B and E be a more free-flowing river than we have currently, you know, to the point that IDNR obviously feels that it improves the quality enough for fish? Um, are they just more concerned with fish movement than the actual water quality?
Uh, which, which options did you say?
Uh, uh, B and E, it, it said down in the low print, or the fine print, that it had lower water quality. Um, is that lower than C, D, and A, or if it's still higher than what we currently have? It was just kind of getting a point of reference.
Yeah, it's definitely, um, lower than C, D, and A, so B and E would still create that, um, kind of pool upstream, um, that we have now. So, it would be a more stagnant condition upstream, um, you would have obviously a little more, um, a longer stretch where the water would be flowing, but, um, instead of just directly over the dam, there would be stair steps. But yes, B and E would still, even though it's, uh, a slightly better water quality, um, than what's there now, it would still be considered a low water quality, I believe from IDNR. You know, they're, in their minds, C, D, and A would be the, the best water quality, and B and E would be secondary, and, um, you know, that's one of their criteria, the other criteria, so, um, again, C, D, and A would be, create the safest condition, or B and E would be a less safe condition.
So, at this point, um, what we had hoped to accomplish by the end of today was to identify the concepts that we would then present at a public open house for discussion and comments. Um, based on tonight's discussion, it sounds like there is still some additional information that, uh, both the board and council would like to see before, um, moving to that point, am I correct there? That there's some cost information that you would like to see refined?
I think it depends on which ones we decided we'd want to have, you know, put forth to the public, because I think if we were to have, like, any of the C, D, or A options, we would have to have more information, because I wouldn't wanna go to the public and say, "This is an option," and then say, "Well, I don't know how much it's gonna cost," you know, "to maintain or to, to build." So, I think that, to me, would be one thing we'd have to have there before we took any one of those. And, you know, I, I don't know that I feel like I can look around the room and say we've got consensus on what we'd like to see, I could be wrong.
And to Alderman Beck's point, I think that there are, uh, many in the community who are interested in maximizing the benefits of the health to the river ecology itself. And so, if you wouldn't be able to make the decision whether to move C, D, and A forward, uh, forward without the additional cost information, then it sounds like we need to have one more meeting before we do that.
How does the Park District feel about that?
I think it would be wise to get some additional information, tighten up this, tighten up the numbers, um, to be able to make an evaluation as to which to carry forward. I'm gonna challenge the design team with one last thought, we don't have to get into a debate or discussion about it. There was a, uh, an option that preceded one through four, one through five, that was a series of riffles upriver, uh, that were open riffles that would retain water, uh, with the dam removed and still maintain depot pond, and I don't see it in here, um, as an option, whether it was discarded for safety reasons or something else, but it was a series of, of, of riffles that were further north, uh, towards the Fabian Park Bridge that would alleviate some of the water quality concerns and still maintain some of the elements that we've discussed here tonight. So, if, if I am miss, um, recalling that...
From my memory, from when we did that, and I'm putting together stuff that I've got at home back from two thousand and three, when I first got on the city council and we went through this, the last time that I remember, um, that one, I think, was discounted because it put so many more tons of concrete back in the river than what we would remove, and because they were so far upriver, they didn't guarantee the level of the depot pond.
Yeah, I, I...
I'm gonna have to go back and find that again, but I believe that that's the reason why that one was discounted.
Okay, then you have a, a little more information than I recall, so I'll take your word for it at this point.
And maybe Hitchcock can find that in what, what, uh, historical information they have. So, I think at this point, if we could get better numbers on what we, what they think, even just the initial costs, or a, a range for operational costs would be on pumping for whatever of the, what was it, A, C, and D that we had there? Yeah, C, D, and A that we had there, then we could decide, I think, one more meeting, we decide which one of these five, or all of these five, or two out of the five, whatever we decide to go with, that that's what we would go to the public forum with. I think that's where we need to be. You know, because I think if we put five out there, where again, we're never gonna get a decision if we go pub, publicly with that.
I, I would concur.
I agree with you.
One last question.
Sure, use your mic.
Is there any way to, you know, they bring up this, this great idea of what we're putting back into the river, is there a way to understand, you know, with taking out the dam, with these different concepts, how much is being put back in, whether it be, you know, estimated for park or for the, the rock tears, you know, how much are we putting back in? I, I'd be interested in...
Like cubic yards?
Well...
'Cause that's how they're gonna quantify it.
I, I, I mean, just, just an idea, so we can understand that and compare that, because, you know, if we're saying that we're taking out three cubic yards, yet we're, with some of these concepts, we're putting in six, you know, is that what we really want to do?
You know, that, that actually, that actually was the same point I was making, though, is that, that's the great unknown, right? I don't think anybody knows that, you know, and, and it's like, and then we don't know what the quality of that dirt is, whether or not we can put anything back. And that's kind of the question I was posing, is that what, what is this dirt that we would be dredging in? Is it even of a quality that we can have a solid structure made from it, park, or, you know, returning something like you're saying to, you know, the river to have some sort of, of foundation? We have no idea, and that's what really makes me nervous about options of dredging, is that you don't know what you're gonna find as far as quality, and what you're gonna have to replace with a better product that's gonna cost you more money.
Well, you know, even putting additional rock in an additional dam with B and C, you know, we're putting more material in there, are we gonna, is it, to build those, is that gonna be more material than what we're taking out?
Totally agree, yeah.
So, I, I don't know if there's some way, you know, maybe even going off, and I know that it's different from the Oswego concept, it's bigger and different, but is there some sort of estimate that we might be able to get based on that to kind of get an idea?
Yeah, I think the big unknown for us is, when we go to start taking that out, how much concrete comes out from basically the two dams that are there? The one that's underlying and the one that we can see. And then, all the sediment that's there, what do we do with that? What can be done with it, we don't know, till we get it out. I mean, it's not like you can go out and drill into the silt and then figure out exactly what's there, when it comes out and it's in the truck and they test it, that's when they can tell. And that was one of the big questions we had the first time, or the last time that we went through this, is those were questions we couldn't answer, and that's one of the reasons why we didn't make a decision in time, and Yorkville got the money to do the dam. We were both in there at the same time to try to figure out who was gonna get the money from the state to do it. Yorkville got their plan ready, got their stuff together, and they did theirs. When they were done, we didn't have any money left from the state. That's why it sat for eighteen years.
Very public death on that dam that, that forced the IDNR into that, that was...
Right, in Yorkville.
Yeah.
So, I think right now, we had tentatively scheduled public open house for July twenty-ninth. Um, do you think it's possible for this group to meet, uh, sometime next week to, uh, and, and Hitchcock, would, would you be ready with the additional information that's been requested next week?
This is, this is John Woody, um, if I may interject, for option C, the dredging option, the only way we're going to know, uh, the condition of that soil that's dredged out, and whether that's suitable, um, for fill, is to actually have a geotechnical firm go out, um, take borings of that material, test it, um, which is, you know, an effort in, in, in itself. Um, the only thing for this conceptual option, uh, the only thing as far as estimating costs that we can do, um, with a reasonable level of effort, would be to determine exactly, is to assume that all that material is, is unsuitable, and to haul that off and bring in new material. That would be the most expensive, um, way to do it, um, but that's, without geotechnical, um, testing of the soil, it's, uh, it's, really our hands tied as to how much material would be suitable for reuse.
Hey, J, uh, John, Alderman Miller here. Do your numbers reflect what you just said? That you're assuming all new fill, that that stuff is unusable?
Our, our assumption was that a, a portion of that would be reused, um, we assumed approximately forty percent would be reused, um, but that would have to be re, reassessed. And, and these conceptual, um, you know, for option C, we still don't have a clear picture of, is that park, um, level with the top of the bank, or is that, um, a few feet down? It, it makes a big difference on volume, 'cause it is a large area, um, you know, what that looks like. Uh, we, we would love to have kind of a, a better picture of, um, an idea of what is envisioned for that area, whether it's filled into the top of bank, or whether it's depressed, um, a couple feet from where it is now. Um, there's, there's some variables there that are still unknown for us to... The more information we have, the better we can, um, nail down those numbers.
I would assume if you were, uh, trying to quantify the number of fill, you would assume just filling the whole thing, it would new dirt at the current level that it's at. That would give us better numbers for us to at least start with.
Well, and it would have to be, to me, it would have to be against probably one of the highest historical floods we've had, so that that would not be within the flood plane, because if you don't do that, it's gonna flood.
Has it flooded over what we've got out here now?
The guesstimate was wrong when they built the bike path on the other side of the river, and we can only use it for X quantity of months during the year, because it's not high enough. I don't want to see that happen if we did something different with this.
So, yeah, so whatever, whatever they quantify needs to be that, assuming not reusing any fill.
Right.
Any dredging or any existing material.
Okay, yeah, that gives me some more information to go on and, and kind of refine these numbers a little bit.
Laura, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Um, I think I'd rather have the design team take the time they need to get us some firmer numbers, since we're gonna be using this as the basis for which we're gonna carry forward to the public, that rather than driving the twenty-ninth as a hard, fast date, I would rather get the information, um, and give the design team enough time to move it. Uh, my other concern is, I think on the twenty-ninth, if you historically look at it, it's the number one vacation week of the entire year, so I wanna make sure that our public meeting is well-attended, since this is such a big decision for the community.
Okay.
Yeah.
It had been tentative, we'll just take that off as a to-be-determined.
Yeah, and I think once we've made our determination of what the, the options are gonna be that we're gonna have presented there, and the data that we feel confident with, then we'll set the public meeting date at that point.
That sounds good, so...
I think that would be easier than constantly pushing it back, or, you know, we've got a lot of people that are very interested in this, so we wanna make sure that we get as many of them at that meeting...
Mm-hmm.
...when that happens.
So, staff will put our heads together with Hitchcock Design Group to determine, um, the length of time that they need to put these numbers together. Eric and I will work with, uh, you and with, uh, the Park Board to determine what date we can bring this back for a discussion with those numbers, and have that drive when we reschedule the public, um, open houses.
Okay.
I have one more.
All right.
One more quick comment.
Mark, go ahead.
Because you, we just, you just mentioned it with, with flooding, it would be interesting to know, um, not that I support C, D, and A, or C and D, certainly I do not, A, um, least of the other three, but anyway, um, from a flooding standpoint, the highest level that the river has gotten, not necessarily the highest level, but common levels that it gets to, how tall does that berm have to be to keep the river from destroying whatever is created in that new park space if you do something like C and D? Again, I don't support it, but that ends up being another factor.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, is I think it had, that has to be looked at, because not only are we trying to protect this building, river rain, and what, whatever, you know, is the depot pond or is in place of the depot pond, all those things have to come into play to figure out what level that has to be, and that completely affects the cost of that because of the surface area of it. Okay, Pat, um, thank you for hanging with us through a little bit longer than normal meeting here.
No, we, we appreciate the dialogue, um, so just to allow you guys to, to carry on, I will, uh, have, entertain a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-eight for the Park Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tillman, second by Gray, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much for the, uh, the great conversation.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, that came down tonight for being patient.